Hello, we are here with the candidate forum for the Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education election scheduled for Tuesday, and I am Tracy Goldison. I'm the editor of the Rio Rancho Observer, and I have been asked to moderate this forum. And so with us, we have the candidates Seth Muller, District One, Michael Berry, District Three, Rebecca Murray, District Five, and Quentin Middleton, District Five. Not participating this evening are Rudy Galindo, District One, and Donna Tillman, District Five. And then how tonight will work, we're expected to run until about 7:00 PM. Each candidate will have one minute to make a brief introduction and then two minutes to answer each question that we have this evening. So Seth, if you want to get started with your introduction?
My name is Seth Muller. I'm a write-in candidate for District One. I don't know if I need to spell my name out because if you write it wrong, they won't count my vote. I've been local emergency manager. I've been doing that for about 20 years. I've been living in Rio Rancho since 2006. All three of our kids are either in or have gone to the Rio Rancho School Program. As an emergency manager, it's all about relationships and having the right people, knowing the right tools, and being able to figure it out before it becomes a disaster or becomes an issue. And I think that I'm just looking forward to this, and thank you for having me to participate.
Okay, Michael?
Yes, I'm Michael Berry. I am running in District Three. My background is, well, I've been in New Mexico for about 10 years now, with those brief stint in Alaska. I first came here to do Rancho School in New Mexico Tech and worked at Los Alamos. Now I work at Sandia, working in national security. I have three kids, all of which are in elementary school or will be in elementary school in a very short period. I'm happy to be here. I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I know that everyone's staying at late, so I appreciate everyone's effort there. So thank you so much.
Rebecca?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Murray, running for District Five. I have three children in the district. I have a senior, a freshman, and a fifth grader. And I have attended leadership development conferences, also attended school board trainings, as well as our regular school board meetings via Zoom and also in person. I've been cheering my daughter on because she's in Color Guard at Cleveland High School, also a current volunteer with Rio Rancho Public Schools. And I thoroughly enjoy interacting with the kids at the schools. We always do the Trump or Treat at my son's elementary school for the last four years. I moved here about four years ago from New York, so we picked Rio Rancho because of the amazing schools, and we absolutely love it here.
Okay, Quentin?
Hey, what's up, y'all? My name is Quentin Middleton. I just moved her into New Mexico about a little over two years ago. I have two beautiful kids. One is a sophomore at Cleveland High School, and I have an eighth grader. He's at Mountain View Middle School. I'm also an educator. I'm a certified social studies teacher, seven through 12. And right now, I'm a business owner for a substance use and alcohol program here in New Mexico. It's an intensive outpatient program where I not only talk to individuals about addiction, but as well as mental health. So I'm excited to be here, and thank you.
Okay, and then with each question, we're just going to move down the line one person with who starts, so that you all have an opportunity to go first. So the first question, we'll start with Michael. What motivated you to run for the school board, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Thank you. I'll quickly say that in 2025, I feel like we should be in a podcast. These forums, I don't seem like they're allowed anymore. So first off, I'll just say I'm a big believer in public schools. I'm not exaggerating when I say that education's one of the big pillars with maybe churches as well, that kind of are keeping our community together and getting us interacting with each other. And so I think it's really important. I myself am a product of public education. I was a difficult student for my teachers, so I'm trying to give back a little bit. But education has been the key that has changed my life, so I am a big believer at it. As I mentioned in my intro, I'm a scientist. I have three small children in elementary school. I think that gives me a good perspective. At work, I mostly run R and D projects, which makes me forced to work with a lot of various government agencies and contractors to make sure that we deliver on national security things. And that gives you a nice data-driven perspective to solve problems. I think that's a valuable thing for the school board. Why I want to run, for all the reasons I mentioned before, but also I have a belief that I want to serve those around me while I'm alive. Here's a little, I wanted to share a little quote, if you can indulge me a little. It says, and this resonates with me about my interest in serving, "This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as mighty one, being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clot of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I'm of the opinion my life belongs to the whole community as long as I live. Is my privilege to do for what I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die. For harder I work, the more I live. Life is no brief candle for me. It's a brief, is a short splendid torch in which I get to hold for a moment, and I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it off to future generations." That really captures why I want to serve. I want to do my part to lift the community and build it stronger for the next generation. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
So what motivated me to run are my children. They are my life, my love, and I've always been hands-on with their education. Like I said, I volunteer within the school district. I love being a part of their day-to-day activities in and out of school. And the next level of that is to serve on the school board, so I can be part of the rest of their education, and also to be a part of the community and for all the students. Thank you.
Quentin?
What motivated me, what I wanted to do, and there was two individuals that sat there, and they greeted themselves to me, and they asked me, would you like to, you know, run for any type of office? And at the time, I said, no, I'm not interested. And took about maybe three or four steps and, you know, thought to myself, why not? It's something that I wanted to do in the past. This was the opportunity to do it. And I turned around and asked them, what should I do? And they encouraged me. They said, this is the information that you need to do. Go upstairs, do the, fill out the paperwork, and, you know, good luck. And by them telling me good luck, I was, it gave me even more motivation. And I believe they support me. And here I sit now. Motivation, what was the second part of the question?
What do you hope to accomplish?
Well, I hope to win. That I hope to. What I hope to accomplish is that I can be an example for a lot of the individuals or a lot of the kids that, you know, may not think that, you know, they can make something of themselves. I know a lot of kids have low self-worth, and I'd like to be an example to show them that, hey, you know, if you take an opportunity or believe in yourself, you know, you can achieve what you set out to achieve.
Okay, thank you. Seth?
So I'm on five community boards. I do a lot in the community. I do a lot with the schools. After COVID, when my role as emergency manager, I got really involved with the schools and met a lot of great people. And for those of you that know, Beth Pendergrass is part of the reason I'm here. She had always told me that this would be a good fit for me and that she thought I would be a good person in what I do with the community and that would fall in line with serving. And so when we moved here in 2009, my daughter, or 2006, my daughter started in 2009, so we've been part of Rio Rancho Public Schools for 16 years now. And I think I just want to, from what I've seen, I want to keep it going for what I hope to accomplish. Personally, I'm not here to get anything personally accomplished. I just want to be able to do the job and do it right. And if I am elected at the end of my term, at the end of my service to the community, if people in the community say that they were proud of what I did, they were glad that they supported me and that there was a reason they got behind me, then I think that I accomplished all that it can be.
Okay, all right, thank you. We will start with Rebecca this time. What do you believe are the biggest challenges facing our school district right now?
I believe that one of the biggest challenges our school is facing right now is our math and reading proficiencies. Our math proficiencies are currently at 34%, and reading is at 50%. Another challenge is federal funding, because I know that has been cut recently, so I'm hoping that we can, as a board, work on our reading and math and allocate the budget to help with the cuts from federal funding.
Okay, all right. Is that it? Okay, Quentin?
Good question. One of the challenges, I believe a lot of our youth, a lot of our kids are growing up too fast. I believe that there should be better guidance provided from our parents, our leaders, community leaders. And I believe we support our children, our kids, a lot more than what we're doing right now. A lot of our kids, especially where I grew up and how I grew up, you know, you had to help provide, you know, with the family or for the family. And so I think that we can, us as leaders, you know, be better at supporting our kids and just, you know, guiding them into better direction and giving them the encouragement to do better, not only at school, but, you know, in the community. And, you know, I encourage them to get into extracurricular activities, after-school programs, you know, things like that. So I think one of the better, one of the challenges that we face is just encouraging our kids to try something, you know, get outside, play more. So I'll leave it right there. Thank you.
Okay, Seth?
Some of the biggest challenges facing our district right now, I think the biggest is finding the right person to fill Dr. Cleveland's shoes, right? Finding the right superintendent to be able to carry on the legacy. We also have an extremely fast-growing community. People coming in, we're getting more kids than we have room for. We have aging facilities that we need to maintain. It costs a lot of money to build a new school. I know that there had been talk about a high school out off Southern, but it's going to be like $50 million, and that's why we ended with Rio Tech. We were able, the school district was able to buy that building and remodel it and for minimal cost compared to building a brand-new facility. I think some of our challenges are also the security department. They do a phenomenal job. They are unbelievable team, and they care about our kids as much, if not more, than the parents. Their job is to protect our kids while they're there. But with the ever-emerging threat of virtual threats, social media, things that are happening online, it's almost impossible for the number of personnel that we have to be able to monitor virtual threats in addition to physical threats. And, I mean, just gathering that information, analyzing it, and then going through and finding what's a credible threat, what's not a credible threat, and the interdiction process that it goes to be able to follow through with it. It's a lot of manpower, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of equipment and supplies. And we also need to be able to provide the ability for year-round training for all of our personnel.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, so there's always a long, steady stream of challenges faced, but I'll say three that I think are kind of especially pressing. First is, if you talk to any elementary school principal or teacher, they will all report that in the last two years, there is a sharp increase in behavior issues amongst the kindergarteners and first graders. And it's, they used to have one incident every other week or something like that, now they're having multiple a day. So that is a real issue, and that creates burnouts for teachers. It's a safety issue, as he brought up. We need to make sure that that's something that can be managed quickly. It's, I think it's a full-court press issue. The second one is a stronger focus on early literacy. There's pretty good, solid research that shows that if a kid is behind in kindergarten, the odds of them catching up fall 50% every single year. So that's a really staggering statistic. We need to be on top of that and making sure our kids, just like she brought up, that they get a focus on early reading. Lastly, I think we need to be proactive about artificial intelligence. I'm a big fan of technology broadly. I survived school using Khan Academy, but I am really concerned that for things like cheating and using AI to kind of not use your brain enough, and you're just kind of cheating through having the AI assist you through the thing, I'm really concerned about that. We need to have some more AI literacy. That's going to be something we have to develop really quickly and get on top of this. I'm also concerned about, there are many companies starting up in the last two years, and they really want to sell really expensive tools to the school districts. And a lot of these technologies start off really cheap, and they get you good news on it, and then they jack up the prices. I think that's coming, if you look at that stuff, it's expensive coming in. Thank you.
Okay, and for our next question, we will start with Quentin, and it is, what qualities do you feel the district needs in our next superintendent?
Good question. I'd like to see the next superintendent have some of the same qualities or align with some of the same qualities that I believe I have in myself. A lot of positivity, integrity, honesty, not only with others, but with theirself, and just take accountability for, you know, what they do. And a visionary, someone who has a plan on, well, let me say a goal, and understand, you know, with their goal that, you know, you have plans to get to their goal, and understand that some, sometimes it's not going to work out for you, but, you know, you hit the reset button and, you know, take a different route and, you know, learn and become a better, you know, person and better superintendent. So, you know, that's, that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
I have a feeling when we get to Rebecca, she's just going to say ditto, but honesty, integrity, I think they need to be an ethical, proven leader, somebody that's available, part of the community across the state, across our community, working with other superintendents, boards, associations, things like that, involved with the schools, an advocate for their district, a positive and proven track record. I think they also need to be personable and willingness to be approached. I know personally, I've actually run into Dr. Cleveland at Sprouts on a Saturday morning, and she was disheveled and like, ah, I can't believe you saw me looking this way. But she was, took the time to say hi to us, say hi to the family. She always, every time we've ever run into her, she takes time to talk to the kids, ask them how they're doing, how school's going, and like generally cares about the people and the families that are participating in the district. And I think that we need to continue that type of, like, they have to be involved in the community.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I'm gonna say ditto. For you, just, no, I think the, one important thing is that she needs to be, or he or she, whoever it comes, is an instructional leader for our, they need to have a background in education. I think that's really important. I think it's not unreasonable to ask for a superintendent that has a proven track record of making measurable gains, whether that's in literacy, financial status of the district. There's many things that you could, they could benchmark there, but I think, I don't think it's too much to ask with how we're a mid-sized school district to get a superintendent that has a proven track record. I think that puts us in an interesting spot. I think we'll get national attention. That means that when we have someone that comes in and does good progress, if they continue their track record of making meaningful gains, improving literacy, they're going to get national attention too. And that means they may not stick around for as long as Dr. Cleveland. I think we're really fortunate to have someone around as long as she has, that's been as skilled as she is. But I think that's a really rare thing, and I think we should plan on getting someone that's good and moves the needle and proves that, does good work for our kids. And then hopefully she's, he or she stays a long time, but if not, we'll be happy that, that we had a part of it. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
Okay, ditto, ditto, ditto. So, okay, so there has been a bar that was set with Dr. Cleveland, so we want someone that can do what she's done, but, and even go further with it. So I want someone with a track record, someone with, that will prioritize academic achievements, that clear goals, and will have the best interest of all our students, and to be present in our community and to be approachable. And I want someone that has an educational background, that would be wonderful, and integrity and transparency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Seth, we'll start with you this time. What role do you believe parents and the community should play in shaping school priorities?
I believe that the, they need to have the ability to provide input, with their input is needed, it's wanted. I know in the past, there's been public meetings. Historically, most public meetings, not just school board meetings, are ill-attended. People just, but you have, they have that opportunity so that parents know that their voice is heard, students know that their voice is heard, the community. Even with, similar to, we were talking, the superintendent, right, the board itself should be heavily involved in the community, so that people know who you are, and they can come up and they can talk to you, whether you're in their district or not, because when you're a board member, you can bring those ideas, even if it's from somebody else's district, to the board. And so having the community and the parents, the students, the staff know that they can trust the board, that when you tell them something, you're not going to just slough it off, put it away, tuck it in your pocket, and never do with it, but like, you're going to take it to the other people, you're going to take it to the team, and you're going to work on it, and you know that, they know that their voice is heard. And I think that's the biggest, is that they know their voice is heard, and they have an opportunity to share that voice with the board members.
Michael?
Thank you. Yeah, I obviously think that parents and the community should have a role, and that, after all, we're all in this together. I don't think you can make lasting, meaningful progress and bringing improvements to all of our kids without everyone's input. And I have had similar experiences that he's shared. Sometimes we don't get too, as much parental involvement as we might like, unless there's a big problem. I served on an parent advisory committee for Martin Luther King Elementary School, and I was really pleased to hear that everything that I, we suggested as a committee to them, they took seriously and they implemented it. It was really apparent. And then they don't have, they can't do everything we want, obviously, but they took everything we said seriously and made good improvements. And I think, so of course, board members, we should, and the higher administration, but I think even at the local level, those kind of things can really make a difference. So, thank you.
Rebecca?
I believe parents and the community should play a vital role in shaping our school policies. We should continue to actively ask for feedback from them. I was on the community parent advisory team in 2023 and 2024, and thoroughly enjoyed giving information back and feedback to the district. Bethany Pendergrass did a wonderful job organizing that. Parents should be involved with Rio Rancho Public Schools when we come out with new curriculum. I know they do forums with that, which is wonderful. The best way to have success is when parents are in an active role in their child's education, and that's how their kids, the kids, our students will thrive.
Okay, thank you. Quentin?
I speak for myself. I would, I would be more aggressive in building bridges with the parents, building bridges with other community leaders, and, you know, making connections with organizations so that, you know, this information or the information that I will, you know, receive, the parents can, you know, get it. I know a lot of parents, especially in this economy, they working a lot, heavy two, three jobs, so they don't really have time to, I guess, look for that information, because their priority is just taking care of the kids, taking care of the rent, among other, other things that they have responsibilities of doing. So I like to make it a little bit easier for, for them by being more aggressive and getting other individuals and organizations and other community leaders to, to reach out to them and provide them with information and just create dialogue so that they can be on, on, on top of what's going on, what I'm trying to do and others in the community are trying to do as well. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then we will start with Michael on this question. How can the district reconnect with families who feel unconnected with education?
Yeah, so there are many reasons in which sometimes they get disconnected from, I'll talk, we'll talk about the, the school district. They get disconnected from the school district, whether they have many reasons for why they want to pull their kids out, send them to another place. There's, there's many reasons. Many of those reasons, maybe we, as a school district, can't help. But for a lot of times, I've had, I've known many experience, I've known many people that will bring their kids in for their first few years, and then something happens with an administration or with a conflict that happened at school, or many, many things could have happened, and then they pull out and change their mind and go somewhere else. I think we should focus on closing that pipe, making sure that it's, that they stay in the school district. So that means they have to have good experiences when they first step in the door. I also think the thing is outcomes. I think when you make progress and, and show rigorous, difficult, and often good advancements in the, in the outcomes of our, of the, the schools, I think parents will come. I think a lot of them are saying, I think I can get a better education elsewhere. I think I, staying at home, can do a better education. I think that I can take them to another private school or, or otherwise, and that would be a better job. If we do good things here, I think that'll speak for itself, and helping families maybe not feel so disconnected from the school district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
We can reconnect with the families that feel disconnected by maybe having socials, having ice cream socials, maybe bringing them in, asking them what their concerns are, why they're, they don't feel connected with the district, send out surveys to get feedback, and basically just kind of doing an olive branch and have forums. Maybe they can come and speak, and, and they could just voice their concerns, and we can hopefully give back information to them that will help them to come back to our schools.
Okay, thank you. Quentin?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah, how can the district reconnect with families who have become disconnected with education?
Again, for myself and other community leaders and organizations, just to be more aggressive and reach out to the parents. I believe that we have a responsibility with the kids to show them the way that there's opportunities out here to be successful at what it is you want to accomplish. So I think I need, I would do a better job. I believe I would make other community organizations and leaders make I would make other community organizations and leaders, make them accountable to going out there and reaching out to the kids, because the kids go home and they talk, and their parents listen. The, the parents don't know what's going on at the schools, they just only know what the, what the kids are telling them. So I, I believe it, it would start with the kids and providing them with some type of hope. And, and again, us as adults, you know, encouraging them to do better, and providing them with the, or encouraging them with the understanding that, you know, you are somebody, and, you know, nobody's better than you. Everybody is equal, no matter, you know, what neighborhood you live in, who your mother, father is, you know, we're all equal, and there's no judgment. And I believe that, you know, if we can, you know, us as a, as a whole, come together and, and do that for our kids, I believe that our kids will in return, you know, do better for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
It ties in with the previous question, getting the parents involved in what kind of what's already been set, like relationship, it's not just building those bridges. I think it's also, you have to put the work in to maintain those bridges, right? So that the parents, if they know their voice is heard, maybe they've been disenfranchised, or they don't want to hang around, or something happened at a school with a teacher or administrator or somebody, another student. And it's just having that, if they know that we're approachable, and that their voice is heard, maybe they can come and, you know, they'll bring it, they'll bring their voice to you, right? If you see them in the community, they'll ask you like, hey, what do you feel about this? Or how do I handle this? And then you know about it. But some of it, if, if the board or people that are in leadership roles have no idea what's going on, then there's no way to fix it, right? So you need to have those open channels of communications with the staff, with the parents, with the students, what's going on, what's happening, and then figure out, is there a trend on why they're becoming disenfranchised from the district, or what's happening? Is it one school, two schools? Is it just across the board, random? Like, what is going on to solve that problem versus just trying to put a Band-Aid on it and move one kid from one school to another?
Okay, thank you. On to the next question, and we'll start with Rebecca this time. How do you view the distinct roles of the school board and district administration? And how would you ensure the board stays focused on governance and long-term direction rather than day-to-day management?
So the school board is in charge of setting up the strategic plan, which is our long-term goals. With setting that up, that is going to then help our superintendent and the administration with the day-to-day guidance to be able to run and manage the district. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Quentin?
I believe that, that should be goals set, measurable goals, and come together and come up with a plan to meet these goals as community leaders. And understand that, you know, not everything that we come up with, you know, may work, but make the proper adjustments and learn and do better. We're, we're human. Everything that we say in up here, you know, may not work, but at least we have a, a goal and a plan, and we're gonna, we're gonna try our best to execute it. But yeah, just come up with a goal and, and a plan, a measurable goal and a plan that we can use to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
I think part of it, the board's pro bono, right? We don't get paid enough to worry about day-to-day management. But as, as a board, the staff that's here for the district, the people that are hired in the different positions, there's a reason that those people are hired, right? It's because they do the day-to-day, and that's not, that's not our job as a board to manage them day-to-day. I don't think anybody has the time or effort or even the desire to do it, especially if you're in a leadership role at your job already, right? You already, like, that's not what you're hired for, that's not what we're here for. The community hasn't elected us to be able to run the district day-to-day. That's why they put us in charge for policy, for strategic plans, approving big-ticket items, approving the budget, major decisions, things like that, how the, how the money is spent, property, facilities, things like that. But just managing the day-to-day, it's, they're two completely different roles. I think the board should have a great relationship with the staff, so that, similar to the parents, right? They know that their voice is heard. Like, if there's things that are happening in the district office, we need to make sure that those are handled and taken care of, and there's some, some sort of accountability that's held by everyone in their role. But ultimately, the board, you're a partner with the administration, but there is, I don't think there's any, or should be, any oversight from the board to the district staff. Like, they, there's leaders in that, in those, in the building, that, that's what they're, they're for.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I, ideal world, the, the policies and the big vision, the budgets, the, the major strategic plan is kind of handled by the board. However, I think what happens in any kind of organization, that if, you know, board members, we're all going to get feedback from the community about this is happening, and ideally, you just want to pass it along to the school, like, yeah, can you take care of that, check it out for us, and, and not harp on it, and hopefully it gets resolved. But you could imagine that if you're getting constantly feedback from the community, like, the high school counseling is a problem, for example, and just over and over and over, the board is just naturally going to zoom in on those kind of issues. And that's probably, that is not the most useful amount of time, but it does take kind of a two-way amount of trust for the, from the board and the administration. The board should be asking, what are we doing to keep the, the ball moving? What, how are we improving outcomes for our students and, and meeting our goals, and not about day-to-day classroom management? But we'll get impact from the community, and if, if we don't get it, if things don't get resolved, the board will naturally, and happens in almost every organization, so. But that's not the most useful amount of time for the board.
All right, thank you. For the next question, we will start with Quentin. What is your position on funding public schools, and how would you prioritize the budget?
I'm pro public schools. I grew up in public schools. I, I, I say that I'm pro public schools. Whatever I can do to progress the public schools, I'm for it. And of course, I surround myself around people who can educate me to, to make great decisions, but I'm pro public schools. The budgeting, again, I would have to put some smart individuals around me to help guide me, people who are professionals at that, or who have some type of experience where they can give me their input and have a vote and say, yeah, that's the route I want to take. So that's how I'll address that question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seth?
I think they do, they need to be funded. And I think, like any organization, we want to try and get every possible dollar that you can to be able to put it to use for the staff and for the students. And I agree, rely on, heavily on the staff that's hired, right? They're, they're the number crunchers. That's not what my specialty is. Like, I'm not going to try and figure it out. But like, that's why we hire these specialists and these people that are trained in that. Prioritizing the budget, I think every year it's a little bit different, but I know part of it is the facilities, right? If we don't have good facilities, then there's, then where are we going to send the kids to be able to, to learn, right? You can't move them just from one school to another, and it's not just trying to figure out if, are we going to build a new one, and where are we going to put it? It's managing and maintaining the existing facilities that we have. It's a lot of money for the maintenance and upkeep on them, and you want to, the budget should be prioritized, that you're handling the most critical issues first, and not just trying to find a Band-Aid to put it over and then hoping the next year, or it's our last year, so like, we'll let the next board handle it, right? It's, you want to be able to fix it and, and do it right the first time, then hopefully you don't have to go back and fix it for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I'll, I'll echo what's been said here. I am also enthusiastically in support of public schools. I will also admit that I have a lot to learn when it comes to how money comes from the state and through our community to fund our schools. That's now something I'm extremely versed in, but I do believe that your budgets tell a story about what's your, what's your priority. And in baseball and basketball, they'll say, we try to keep money in the, on the field or on the court. I think that's an important part of it. Are, how are we making sure our teachers are taken care of, and our, our, our students are taken care of, and where we apply money? We want to see positive outcomes come out.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
Of course, I'm all about funding the public schools, because my kids are in there. And we have amazing students in the district that need the funding. Prioritizing the budget, now, obviously, I would love the majority of the money to go right into the classrooms for our students and for our teachers to be able to thrive, and to have the essential tools they need to teach the children, because without our teachers, you know, our students can't learn. But I will definitely heavily rely on also the guidance of, of others to help me, to help us figure out the budget. We can also ask on our legislatures to help fund the schools. That is something that I'm definitely willing to do. And we definitely need to make sure we keep up with our facilities and the curriculum. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then on to our next question, and this time we'll be going back to Seth first. How would you support teachers and staff in our district?
I think the biggest is communications, being available. If this, similar to the parents, right? They need to know that they can come to you and, that their voice is going to be heard. Town hall meetings, set away a day or every other week, every week, however, depending on your schedule, like, this is like, kind of like office hours like a professor, right? This is when I'm available to do emails and phone calls, and if your staff are, be able to respond to them. And it's our job to represent the, the district, the schools. That includes the staff and making sure that them, the teachers, and on teachers, I think they're underappreciated. I think they do way more than people realize that they do. And for me personally, I would just thank you to the teachers. I know the union has endorsed me as a candidate, and I sincerely appreciate it. I know that it's not a light choice that they take, and it's not a light choice that I accept, and really appreciate that. And so I think it's just, a lot of it's the communication, the back and forth. And then a huge thank you to Wyndham, because these questions, man, he made us think.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I, you know, an easy answer might be, just get more money, pay more money for the, the teachers and support. Of course, we should be fighting for that where we can. I also think that just having, you know, we'll speak for about teachers for a minute. Good administration in this, in the actuals, in the schools goes a long way. I have a friend who taught, is, is teaching here in Rio Rancho, and they taught in one school, and they didn't fill the support they, they want, they needed, and they transferred to another school. And pay was the same, a lot of it was the same, but they felt like the new administration was supporting them. And that went a long way to, you know, prevent burnout. I think that go, that's a, that's, are we, are the teachers feeling like they're supported? Are they getting offered professional development? Are they getting offered, this fly is, flying, going to fly in my mouth. Those small things send a big message. I've also personally, I, I agree, making sure you have open lines of communication with the staff, and not just try to stay too far aloof, get in the trenches. I've personally tried to take regular time, once or twice a month, to volunteer in my son's classroom, and some other people's classrooms, just to get exposure, practicing, doing the math with the kids, just so we can know what it's like to be in the classroom in the schools. And I think that's been tremendously helpful. How can you help support them if you don't know what it's like to be participating? It's maybe not reasonable to be, to, to do shadow every someone's role in the school district, but you got to give a chance to be there and just see what it's like in the trenches. So, thank you.
Okay. Rebecca?
I would like to have an open-door policy, so I'll be available via email, via phone. I would like to have, to be actually active in the schools. I would like to go and speak with the staff and the teachers. I, just like you, I thoroughly enjoy going into my son's school, the elementary school, and speaking with his teachers. I just went on a chaperone trip to the water festival, and I had such a lovely time with the teachers, and it's just getting to know them, and we want to support them, because without them, our kids wouldn't be able to learn. So we just have to make sure we're listening to them, and that they know that their needs are being met.
Okay, thank you. Quentin?
Growing up, we had our school board members and community leaders come to our schools and, and, and talk to the kids, or talk to us. As a teacher, that we had opportunities for a lot of our, our community leaders or the school board, board members to come to some of the meetings that we would have in the auditorium, where our, our, our principal, the leader of the school, would, would speak to us and ask us questions. And I would like to take that opportunity to, when those principals have those meetings with the whole, whole school of, or the community of teachers, to address some of the concerns, or just listen and create dialogue with the teachers and the principal, because the opportunities are there for, for myself and others up here on stage, when they get the opportunity to use that opportunity to just create dialogue. Because I'll tell you now, as a, as a teacher, I'm ready to talk to you, but we just may not, or a lot of the individuals in these positions don't take that opportunity to, to, to go out there or, or be more aggressive. And I like to be one of those individuals, to be more aggressive and go to these schools where the principal have these meetings with the teachers, and talk about the test scores that they have, amongst so many other things that is being addressed at those meetings. And I can put that in my schedule and go to each school, do my best. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then with that, we are on to the final question of the forum, and this one will start with Michael. How will you measure the success of the school district during your term?
So, we've all probably seen, there's many, many ways to measure success. There's many ways to see how we're doing. However, each metric is a little, doesn't always paint the full picture. So measuring's always the hardest part. We have, we in Rio Rancho are very blessed. We have a lot of opportunities. Our community does pretty well. We have a lot of good things going for us here in Rio Rancho. With that, we have to, you know, the Spider-Man quote where, now I'm blanking on it here, where much is given, much is required. I, I think it might be easy for us to look around the state, look around other school districts and say, we're doing, we're doing better than those school districts, so we're good. I think we should be always pushing on the gas for improvement. I think our students deserve that, our community deserves that. It's important for all of us to, to give rigorous, good education, to provide positive outcomes for these kids. There's many ways that the positive outcomes can be improved. Graduation rates, where are they, are they going to college? Are they going to tech schools? Are they going? There's many, many, many ways. None of them paint a perfect picture of, of our students' performance, but getting the information is, is key, and always asking to do a little bit more is also, is, is where I want to focus. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Rebecca?
How would measure the How would measure the success during my term? Like Michael said, standardized testing scores, grades, graduation rates. What I really want to see is the kids to, who don't want to go on to the college pathway, that they can find a path with the career technical education. At the end of the day, when all said and done, I just want our kids to thrive after high school and have some kind of path. We can also ask our kids through surveys and feedback about their school environment, overall atmosphere, maybe ways we can improve things for them. So we can figure out what we can do to help them with being successful in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Quentin, your turn?
So the question is how will I measure the success of the students?
Of the district?
Of the district? Give me a few seconds to think about it because it's, it's a difficult question and I'm a, I'm a person, I don't, I believe in progression. And I know there's a lot of metrics that we can use to compare, you know, five years ago up until now or maybe a year ago up until now. I would use those, I would use those things that we have set in place already, those metrics that we have to measure it. But also, I want to see, because you know, we can look at those metrics and, you know, like you said, it doesn't really paint a big picture. I mean, it gives us an idea. But I would, I would like to see for myself, you know, how these schools are doing and, you know, see with my own eyes and be able to make my own opinion. But it's such a, it's such a hard question to answer because, you know, for me, I just, I just, I, I truly believe that, you know, all of our kids, all of the students at these schools are doing their best and, you know, some of them, their perception isn't where, where it should be. And it's, it's something that, you know, I want to just be able to go to these schools and, and, you know, play a part and, and improve it the best way I can and, and, you know, work with others to, you know, just, just make it better, to progress it. And I, I stand on that. I stand on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Seth?
I think it's my turn to say ditto now, right? They took all my, they took my answers. I think the biggest is, I think all of us are, and like we want to continue being the best district in New Mexico. And there are a ton of metrics on how to figure that out. But having people say they want to move to Rio Rancho because of the schools, like that's part of the main reason they moved to Rio Rancho is because of the schools. I think that says a lot about the district and that's, those are things that we can measure, right? That we're doing a great job and we're continuing on. It is, the graduation rates increasing, enrollment increasing, state testing increasing, scores, having good positive feedback from staff, family, community members. I think all of those are things that we can measure our success on. But, and I don't think, I know it's, the question is how will, like how will I measure success of the district? I don't think anything that I do myself is going to make the district successful. It's the board, it's the staff, it's the teamwork that you come together. Without the team, you're not coming. I know they say there's no I in team. Somebody, oh, but there's a me, but right? It's, it's the team, right? It's, there's nothing that I do individually that's going to change, make or break anything that happens for the district. And I think that, and then for this, I want, thank you Tracy for moderating this, appreciate it. I thank you to the staff for coming, hanging out extra time today. Quentin, Rebecca, Michael, thank you. It was nice, I've met Rebecca before, but it was nice meeting you guys. And I, I just think there's nowhere for the district to go but up, right? There's, the people that want to serve on the board are high caliber people. The learning that's happening today are the leaders that are going to be tomorrow.
Okay, and so that concludes the evening. And again, if you joined us midway, you can catch the full video through either the Rio Rancho Public Schools YouTube or it will also be available on the Rio Rancho Observer website, Facebook and YouTube as well. And I want to thank you all for coming out and taking the time to answer these questions for our public so that they can make an informed decision when they go to vote, either on Tuesday or do early voting. So again, Election Day is Tuesday, November 4. Thank you all. And thank for those of you who joined us online watching.